Carlos Cuba on the bass. Girona Cano on the drums. Freddy Ramos on the guitar. And Jenny on the violin. My name is Gustavo Bogach, clarinet and saxophone. Thank you very much Wendy. Thank you very much everybody at the L.A. Public Library for all this support. Made in L.A. is made of us. We are L.A. All of you are L.A. Thank you very much. We're gonna finish with one song. Come here. We're gonna make Wendy sing one song now, I'm kidding. We wanna sing a... We wanna play a song that we play for the Wedding Crashers. Yazu, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming. We hope you all really enjoyed it. And remember to please fill out your comment cards and drop them on the table where you checked in. And then also validate your parking ticket with your library card at the information desk. So it's only a dollar. And then check out lapl.org/madeinla for the list of all the other programs happening here in the taper, as well as almost 50 programs happening citywide at branches, L.A.P.L. branches. So, thank you so much.
I'm Beatrice Girmala, Assistant Chief of the Los Angeles Police Department and Director of the Office of Special Operations. As you know, we live in complex times. Even though we like to think of our workplaces as places of safety and security, that is not always the case. We also have to be aware of our surroundings wherever we are. This could mean while we're at the movies, shopping, at school, or even while worshiping. Sometimes individuals who have a grudge or people who are unstable can become threats in the workplace or elsewhere. When these people are armed with guns, we refer to them as active shooters. Although it's unlikely to ever happen to you, you should be prepared and know what to do if an active shooter ever shows up at your place of work, or even if you think one might be there. This information is applicable to everyone, including persons with disabilities and individuals with access and functional needs. There are three basic things you should do if you ever find yourself in an active shooter situation. Run, meaning to flee the scene, evacuate, or get away immediately. Hide, meaning to get someplace where the shooter can't see or hear you. Or fight, meaning to do everything you can to hurt, hinder, or stop the shooter. If there's ever an active shooter in your workplace, act immediately. Choose your best option and do it. The time to think about these options and to be prepared is now, before such a situation ever arises. Your first clue that there is an active shooter could be the sound of gunshot shots or a warning from a coworker. In that case, your most ideal response is to evacuate the premises, get out, and get to a safe location. Ideally, you should always know of at least two different ways to get out, no matter where you are. Accessible exits may be limited, so individuals with disabilities or access and functional needs should always plan ahead. If you think there is an active shooter, get yourself out first, even if others with you are hesitant to do so. Help others to get out if it is safe to do so, and guide other people to safety if you can. Leave all non-essential belongings behind. Use visual clues or gestures to assist people who may not be able to hear you. If police or security guards are nearby, keep your hands visible. Follow the instructions of any law enforcement or first responders. Do not attempt to move wounded people. Again, your first option is get out. Once you are safely away from the situation, contact 911 to report what you know. If you can't get out, your second option is to hide. Finding a hiding place which is outside of the shooter's area of view, preferably a room with a lock on the inside of the door. Individuals with disabilities or access and functional needs may need assistance hiding. Once you are inside, lock the door, and if possible barricade it with large items such as cabinets or desks. Remain quiet and silence cell phones and printers. Turn off anything that is making a sound, such as a television or radio. Turn off any lights and hide behind large items. Help anyone who needs assistance to hide to the best of their ability. If you can't run and you can't hide, your final option is to fight. In this case, you and the people who are with you need to commit to act as aggressively as possible. Arm yourself with anything that can be used as a weapon. Individuals with disabilities or access and functional needs should remember that wheelchairs and other medical equipment can be used as a weapon or as a distraction. Other weapons could be fire extinguishers, canes, crutches, letter openers, scissors, vases, telephones, chairs, and any heavy object. Do your best to hide from the attacker, and when he enters the room, hit him with everything you have. Don't hesitate, be aggressive. Your life could depend on it. When first responders arrive, their priority will be to stop the shooter. Only after that is done will they help anyone who is injured. Be aware that there may be loud noises, such as explosions, yelling, and sirens that could trigger sensory issues or confusion. There may be officers in military-style gear. There may be smoke that obstructs vision or irritates the eyes and throat. Individuals may be pushed to the ground by law enforcement for their safety. Keep your hands where they are visible, and don't make any sudden or threatening movements. So let's review. Even though it is not likely that you will ever be faced with an active shooter situation, it could happen. Be prepared to do one of these things. Run, meaning get out. Hide, meaning don't be seen or heard. Fight, meaning do whatever it takes to stop the shooter. If you have any questions, the time to consult the management of your workplace is now, so that you can be ready for the worst if it ever becomes necessary to act to protect yourself.
Have some more fun with some more cheese. Be sure to take the MetroLink to L.A. Union Station so that you can easily transfer to fun places like Little Tokyo. Once you get to L.A. Union Station, find tracks 1 and 2 for the Metro Gold Line. Remember that if you have a MetroLink ticket with a TAP logo, you must tap to access Metro Rail turnstiles. Be sure to take the Metro Gold Line south toward Atlantic. The train will arrive shortly. Once you get on, make sure to get off at the first exit for the Little Tokyo Arts District. Exit the train and proceed to exit towards Alameda and First Street. From there, you can get to the Japanese-American National Museum by going across the street on First. We're at the Japanese-American National Museum, where they promote understanding and appreciation of America's ethnic and cultural diversity by sharing the Japanese-American experience. Across the street from the museum, you'll find Little Tokyo. Here we are in Little Tokyo. Not only is Little Tokyo an historical focal point, there's also a lot of exciting things to see and eat. Be sure to check out the Higashi-Honganji Buddhist Temple, located on Omar and Third Street. The temple promotes the teachings of Jodo Shinshu and is a beautiful example of Japanese architecture and landscaping. When you utilize MetroLink and public transportation, you can have more fun because you can go to more places.
Hi, I'm Gina Rae, and this is my dog Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Good morning, good morning. If everybody would please take a seat. I want to welcome you to the Valley. Today is Friday, October 5th. We are awaiting a quorum, but we do have other business that we can begin with today. At least, we can begin our presentation portion of today's agenda. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Blumenfield, and Bob, if you would start us off.
So I have two presentations today, two very fabulous presentations. I'm going to start with Mr. Brad Upshaw. Colleagues, I am very proud to honor Brad Upshaw today for his induction into the National Teachers Hall of Fame.
Let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations, congratulations.
Now, a lot of folks don't know what that means. It is a big, big deal. Induction into the National Teachers Hall of Fame is an incredible achievement. Only five teachers from across the entire country receive this honor. He is in illustrious company, becoming only the second LA US teacher in our history to be inducted, the other being Jamie Escalante. Now Brad, yeah, Brad is in his 34th year as a third grade teacher in the Los Angeles Unified School District. He teaches at Van Alden Avenue Elementary School on the border of two communities in my district, Tarzana and Reseda. Yoshim Yang, the principal of Van Alden Elementary, who is here today as well, nominated Brad as the candidate after hearing Claudia Sanchez talk about the National Teachers Hall of Fame on NPR. Brad and his fellow inductees in the National Teachers Hall of Fame 2018, they spent a week in Washington DC. They were meeting with our nation's education leaders, the Department of Education, the NEA, the US, in the US Congress, and others. And this summer, these five inductees, again, five for the entire country, spent a week in Emporia, Kansas, which as everyone here knows, Emporia, Kansas is the home of the National Teachers Hall of Fame. How many people actually knew that here? Well, he was there and they did an hour-long live radio broadcast, recorded a 90-minute roundtable discussion, and attended the 27th Annual Induction Ceremony. Artifacts and mementos from Brad's 30-year teaching career are currently on display in Emporia, Kansas, at the display of the National Teachers Hall of Fame Museum. And that display highlights his work as the lead teacher and mentor. It shows off his 81 Videos in the Classroom Awards, and it presents his extensive professional development workshop resume from around the state. He also proudly shares many personal letters from his students are on display in the museum. I know there's going to be a rush to get your plane tickets to get to Kansas to see this, but you don't have to because we have the real deal right here with us. He received his teaching credential from Cal State Northridge and was recently recognized as the CSUN Alumni of the Year. He was recognized at their Alumni of the Year Dinner. Now, Austin Butner, who's the new superintendent, visited Brad's classroom on the first day to congratulate him. And Mr. Upshaw will continue teaching his third graders in Room 14. Whether or not they realize that they have a Hall of Famer teaching them or not, he is going to give them the education that they deserve. But in addition, he's been named to the Advisory Board of the National Teachers Hall of Fame, and he will now serve as the lifelong ambassador for public education. And I want to read you a quote from Brad, even though you're going to hear from him. It's such a great quote, I thought I would read it. He said, "Teaching is storytelling. I try to find the essential. I do not want to be boring. I do not want to turn off the curiosity and sense of wonder. There has to be a reason to come to school every day. I want teachers, and I want students to know that something great is going to happen, and they don't want to miss it. Let's be smarter and nicer than we were yesterday." That's the kind of teacher, as a parent, we want our kids to be going to your classroom, because that is the kind of energy that we want out there. Now Brad is joined today by his wife Sheri, his stepdaughters Shaina and Alyssa, his brother-in-law Scott Quinn, who is a fire department battalion chief with Battalion 4. So let's give Brad a big round of applause. And Brad, would you like to say a few words?
I appreciate that. I was going to say that city government leaders and teachers have something in common. We have a common purpose. We want to improve the lives of the citizens in our community. And today, the Los Angeles City Council and the National Teachers Hall of Fame have something in common. They both want to support, recognize, and elevate the teaching profession. October 5th just happens to be UNESCO's World Teacher Day. So I am honored to be here today to represent the public school teachers in this city, and I am personally grateful to this city council for the recognition. When you talk to accomplished people, you find that besides their family and friends, they often give credit for their success to a teacher in their life, a teacher that challenged them, or inspired them, or encouraged them in a significant way. Like a talent agent in Hollywood, teachers can discover the talents of their students, develop those skills, and help them share their gifts with the world. I live and work in CD3 where I am filled with purpose and joy every day. I get a preview of our future working with the third graders in my classroom. And I can tell you all that Los Angeles is great, but we're just getting started. So let's get to work. And maybe some of you know of an accomplished career teacher that you could nominate for the National Teacher Hall of Fame. I brought today with me an application for the class of 2019. And please don't forget that tomorrow is the Emergency Preparedness Fair in Reseda. Thank you very much.
Wow, I didn't even prompt him to publicize my emergency preparedness fair that's happening tomorrow in Reseda that everyone should know about, but thank you for that. So if you'd accept this token of appreciation, not just signed by me, but by the mayor and all of the council members. Take a photo here and...
You can see their faces? No, they want to see your faces in the camera. My boss is in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, I have one more presentation.
Go right ahead, Mr. Blumenfield.
You know, it's so great to be able to hear, you know, talking about teachers and cops. That's what I'm talking about today, folks who really are out there on the front lines making our future better and protecting and serving us. So today, we're going to honor Cory Garza. Cory, come on up. You want to bring anyone else with you who wants to come on up, family? You want to be surrounded by the love and by your fellow officers here? What's that? Okay. So today, we are honoring an unsung hero of the LAPD, but we are going to do a little singing about him today. Officer Cory Garza makes a big difference every day just by doing his job. He joined the LAPD on August 15th, 2011. He grew up in law enforcement, in a law enforcement family, with his grandparents being Marin County Sheriff deputies and San Antonio police officers. His father, Mark Garza, is a lieutenant for LAPD's Mission Gang Enforcement Detail, and he's with us here. After graduating the academy, Officer Garza completed his probation at the Tobanga Division where he spent a little over 12 months training with different officers. He has worked North Hollywood, Valley Traffic, Central Division. He has worked the Safer City Initiative that included a foot patrol downtown. He's done a lot. He also, Mitch Englander is not here quite yet, but he was a recipient of the E Award. For, you know, and that tells you something. I don't know what it tells you, but it tells you something. But it's an award for excellence, and that he certainly deserves. And during his time at Valley Traffic, Officer Garza wrote over 900 citations to enhance public and vehicle safety. If anyone here received one of those citations, it was for your own good and for our community's good. And at the direction of former Police Chief Charlie Beck, Cory was awarded a unit citation from the Police Commission. In 2016, LAPD put together a unit to help respond to the needs of our ever-growing homeless population, which is now called HOPE, or Homeless Outreach Proactive Engagement. Now since being in this unit, I've gotten to work with Officer Garza, and he has helped over 60 people get off the street and into some form of housing. He has been on the front lines dealing with homelessness and doing it in a responsible and sensitive and appropriate way. In 2017, he helped organize the largest cleanup in the Valley in the Sepulveda Basin. It was while working hand-in-hand with the rapid response in my district that Officer Garza began noticing more and more homeless encampments were popping up, and that this was contributing to unprecedented amounts of trash and debris in the LA River and on our neighborhood streets. And he took it upon himself to bring together the key city players to develop a strategy that would help respond to growing homelessness in our area. As many of you may know, or may not know, that while the West Valley doesn't have the density of homeless individuals on the streets that we see in some other areas and some other districts around this horseshoe, we also have fewer service providers. So the density is less, but we have many fewer providers. So Officer Garza, and that makes it very difficult. And Officer Garza has made it his mission to make the best use of the resources that we do have, and to ensure that the West Valley and the LA River get the attention and services that they need. He attended multiple community meetings with senior lead officers. He listens to the concern of the community. He has set up a lot of meetings with my staff to present his findings, and not just findings, but to help us work on solutions. And thanks to his efforts, we developed a plan for funding additional overtime hours to help tackle the needs for services to remove hazardous materials and bio-waste from getting into the river. And that strategy that we've been working on with the overtime has really been paying dividends, and in a very positive way. Officer Cory Garza is committed to performing his duties as a law enforcement officer. He goes above and beyond the call of duty. He works alongside his fellow officers to keep the community safe, while at the same time connecting those who are unsheltered with social services and resources that help them transition from the streets. We are grateful to have his service and leadership, and we've got a few folks who want to speak on his behalf, but let's give him a big round of applause. So first to say a few words, I want to bring up Officer Venezuela.
Morning. My name is Captain Craig Venezuela. I'm from North Hollywood Division. First, Councilmember Blumenfield, thank you for your support of the Los Angeles Police Department. And thank you for honoring Officer Garza's work and celebrating what he does. Truly, the HOPE program, the Homeless Outreach Program proactive engagement is an important part of what we do, and truly a part of Chief Beck's vision of policing with purpose, policing with compassion, and policing with partnerships. And from the beginning of HOPE, that Officer Garza's been there, he's truly been on the front lines, and you've heard a lot of the details, so I won't go over those. But Cory truly deserves this proclamation, truly deserves being celebrated, and he's done a great job, and I want to say thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Gerald Case. I'm the supervisor of the Valley HOPE Unit. When the city and the city council and the mayor's office put forth the vision of the HOPE team to, you know, to address the homelessness crisis in the Valley and the city of LA, the department put out a calling to officers that were hardworking and forward-thinking that can address this problem at its core. Cory answered that call, and he ran with it. He quickly became a leader within the unit. He has, he made the effort to meet chronically homeless people, where they eat, where they sleep, where they live, and find out what is at the core of their being homeless, and how to address that and how to get them into services. And with that, he had to, you know, he had to go forward, as the councilman said, we have fewer resources in the Valley than in some other parts of the city. He partnered with city entities, he partnered with county, with state, and other nonprofit organizations to address the needs of the homelessness and bring them into where they can do their services. So I appreciate that, and as the HOPE unit has expanded and grown, Officer Garza has grown with it and is still a leader within the division, or within the unit, as the councilman said. He's spearheaded the, you know, our work with sanitation to increase the amount of coverage that is within CD3. He has increased the presence of the police department within CD3. And I am honored to have Cory in my unit and his leadership, and I'm excited to see what he does in the future.
My name's Officer Jennifer Pepke. I'm the senior lead officer at Topanga Division for the Winnetka area. Cory and I have worked together pretty hand-in-hand, along with my fellow partners, for the past two years, ever since he was a part of the HOPE team. I've known him for six years, and in those six years, he's done a lot for us. He comes from a family of law enforcement, as you heard Blumenfield speak about. So after he graduated from the academy and he came to Topanga Division, he's kind of held it a higher standard just of who his family is. He knows a lot more coming in than the average officer that just graduated. While he's been at Topanga Division, we never got a chance to actually work in a black-and-white together. However, he was known for being a hard worker, as well as learning as much as he can through the time that he was there. In the last few years, our department created what you've heard of our HOPE Division. The HOPE Unit is compiled of a bunch of officers who help the ever-growing homeless population that we've now have encountered. With Officer Garza in the HOPE Unit, he has helped create this amazing, this amazing unit with his fellow officers. But as well as with the issues that we've had, he wanted to make sure that he was able to step up and go beyond, above and beyond of what his job included. So I went with him to countless meetings with Blumenfield's office to try to help create a new program, or try to fix issues that we've had in cleaning up our area. So on behalf of myself, Topanga Division, West Valley Division, and the community of CD3, Officer Cory, we thank you very much.
You often tell a lot about someone by the company that they keep, and you keep great company, and a lot of really heartfelt words were spoken. So would you like to say a few words yourself?
Just give him one big, big, big round of applause. And Officer, you know that this council has been trying to figure out a formula so that we can help people off the streets, off of a concrete mattress into a real mattress, and to hear that you personally have taken 60 individuals and given them a second chance at normalcy. A second chance at life is just unbelievable. And I'm going to ask, let's give him one more round of applause. You've saved some lives. God bless you.
I'll keep it short. I just want to say thank you to everyone that spoke. It means a lot. And to the councilman, sir, thank you for your unconditional support of our unit and fellow officers. Thank you. A man of action.
Anyway, again, thank you and congratulations. Okay, we do have a quorum. Why don't we, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Cidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretz, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Bryce Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Coretts moves, Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Mr. President, items one through six are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected committee report for item one, that reflects the positions of the community impact statements on the files, has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's hold that item, and let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special, or general public comment, or the special meeting.
Why don't we enter this special, so why don't we recess and go into the special meeting?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Um, excuse me, item seven is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief, but I did want to highlight this item. We have talked a lot about the progress that we're making in our individual districts for bridge housing, and today we are approving a bridge housing that the city will be doing with the county and the federal government on VA property that will benefit the entire city of Los Angeles and serve veterans from throughout the city. For many, many decades, veterans have slept under our bridges, and on our streets, and in our parks, while 388 acres of property deeded specifically for veterans' purposes has remained virtually empty on the west side. After a lawsuit a couple of years ago, the VA has committed to start providing services for veterans, and they're undergoing a master plan right now that will eventually provide 1,200 units of permanent supportive housing for homeless veterans. The VA has stepped up and was the first on the west side to offer safe parking, and when the mayor announced that he was doing bridge housing in Los Angeles, the VA contacted me and Supervisor Kuhl and said, "We would like to be a part of this." So the city and the county will split the funds of construction, the city will build it, and the county, or the city, or the, that federal government, the VA, will provide the onsite services for veterans. This will be happening quickly. This will probably beat Hollywood online. This may be the second in Los Angeles. The VA is going to start construction on it before the end of this month, and it will be bridge housing for veterans from throughout the city of Los Angeles on the VA campus, and that will be there until they get their permanent supportive housing online. So want to ask for an aye vote on this, and thank everybody for finally moving forward on something that our veterans have been owed for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. So let's, on that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, it's been a request to do that forthwith, so ordered. Is that the last piece of business in the special?
Yes, it is.
Then let us adjourn and return to the regular.
And that takes council back to items called special or general public comment?
Okay, why don't we take up item one? Now, item one was heard in committee. On item one, we had a robust public comment. We heard over 37 speakers, but this is an important issue, and I know that some people have traveled to be here today. So even though, Mr. City Attorney, we have fulfilled the public comment obligation, I would like to, on this item, reopen public comment for one minute, for 10 additional minutes, so that I can get 10 additional speakers on this item. All right, so let me start off with Catherine Carpio, Mr. Previn, Sylvia Moore. If you guys would just come forward. Mr. Previn, the floor is yours.
Will I be afforded a little more time?
No, Mr. Previn, one minute. Let's hold this clock. We'll go back to, to the one minute, and go ahead.
So no CIS timing?
No, because the, the public comment has been satisfied, I'm just reopening it to give other people an opportunity to speak on it. So go ahead.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. I appreciate the effort to spend the substantial funds in the matching fund program, it's over 16 million, but I think to get it to grassroots candidates, rather than having a $25,000 aggregate threshold, you should consider a $25,000 qualifying signature, that means the clerk checks the ballot, to get on the ballot, 500 each stipend of $25,000, so that all the candidates would have a seed to start. That would be like one mailer for the great Paul Coretts, who told me, "You should be easy to raise $25,000 against an incumbent. It's very hard to raise $1,000 against an incumbent. It's very hard to raise $5,000 against an incumbent, and I knew you were considering $11,000 to get into the..." It's, it's very hard, because you, you don't see it when you're the incumbent, but when you're a non-incumbent, you feel that people don't want to go against the seated guy who pies leans, or who does vacations of property. You may need them, and if you're giving money at all, you're a city insider, please, sir, make it go away. And also the debates, two in the primary and two in the general election, and there should be no town hall, because that's a trick. That means...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Okay, so is Catherine? Yes, come forward, and then I'm going to call on Rob, Rob Quan, I think I already called Ms. Moore. And after Rob, Calvin Sloan, yes?
All right, thank you for having me here, and I, my name is Catherine Carpio, I'm a field organizer for California Clean Money Campaign, and I urge you to support Councilmember Mike Bonin's motion to amend the L.A. Matching Funds, not only because it allows small donors to be heard, but it also allows more candidates to qualify using the same number of max qualifying contributions as now. Does it make it harder for candidates to qualify than current law? Doesn't slow down when candidates get matching funds, and automatically adjust for inflation as the max qualifying contributions adjust to inflation? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's reset the clock.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Moore. I'm Southern California organizer, representing California Common Cause. I want to thank you, Council President Wesson, and the entire city council for taking up these campaign finance reform proposals before you today. We strongly support the reforms, including increasing the match rate to six to one, that will empower small donors and give the people of Los Angeles a greater voice in local elections. We also urge you to pass the Bonin motion and the Rue motion that will further encourage grassroots candidates to run for office. I want to specifically point out that the Bonin motion is important, so that we, too, add to the package of reforms, so as not to make it harder for grassroots candidates to participate. Finally, we would suggest tightening up the debate participation requirements, so that a qualified debate be open and advertised to the public, invite more than one candidate to attend, and allow the audience interaction with the candidates. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Rob?
A strong public financing system is only as powerful as it is accessible. In 2011, 75% of candidates qualified 21 days before the election, and 2015, that dropped to just 21%. By lowering the maximum match, we are also lowering the amount of contributions which can be applied to the meeting this requirement. We're effectively requiring twice as many contributors. In the words of our President Trump, the message is, "The wall just got 10 feet higher." After our campaign finance systems introduction, we reached an all-time high in female representation on this council, 33%. We now sit at 13%, a number half that of every other major city in this country. While women win L.A. races at the same rate men do, men make up more than 80% of candidates. I strongly support Councilmember Bonin and Coretts' leadership, and hopefully lowering this aggregate threshold. We are five times the size of New York City's threshold. If this is a city for the many, and not just the moneyed, I hope you will vote for it and show that.
Thank you. Next speaker? In fact, if I candido, if I could get you to come up after this gentleman. Yes, sir, please identify yourself and welcome.
My name's Calvin Sloan. I'm a longtime resident of L.A., born and raised here. Would like to echo Rob's comments, which were incredible, and the, our campaign finance systems have real-world impacts on our policies, on our public officials, on who represents us, and it's incredibly important. So in relation to item one, as proposed, the current campaign finance proposal would actually make it more difficult to qualify. You'd have to have a, you know, about $11,000 more in, in contributions. Please support this amendment to lower it down. Thank you, Bonin, for putting it forward, and to make our public financing more democratic in general. Just really quickly, we are in a war in democracy right now. It's, you don't have to look far to find that. The U.S. Senate just voted to advance the vote for Brett Kavanaugh. This is important, and we appreciate your votes and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candido, and then I saw Sean Murphy earlier. Sean, you're next.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilmembers. First of all, thank you for being in Van Nuys. Mr. Bonin, you've become a surprise. You are a standout in this council, and the things that you fight for are unbelievable, and I, I want to thank you for being a council member on this board. Mr. President, in 1997, I ran for city council against Mayor Richard Riden, one of the richest men in the city of Los Angeles, with $1,000. I came up with 5,000 votes. In this audience, I see a lot of future leaders. I see people who care about this city. I see people who have the potential to make Los Angeles great, even greater. So, Mr. Bonin, we support you, and again, thank you very much for being in Van Nuys.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. President, I am supporting this item, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I saw him earlier, I don't see, yes, I do. Trent, you want to come on? Followed by Anastasia Kazar. Yes, sir, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Trent Lang, President and Executive Director of the California Clean Money Campaign. I'd really like to thank the Council President for his leadership in bringing this package forward, and the rest of the council, especially Councilmember Rue, for his amendments. Have you heard from other people, it's so important to empower small donors, to give people the feeling that they have a real voice in their democracy, which overall this package will do. However, we do want to say, as you've heard from several of the speakers, that we really need to make sure there's not an accidental side effect of making it harder for candidates to qualify. Because we've lowered the maximum qualifying contribution, you can't get $250 contributions to add up to your $25,000. It would take more than twice as many of the contributions. That's why Councilmember Bonin's motion to change it so it's the same number of the maximum, $115 contributions now, as in current law, is so important, we urge you to consider that, and then accept the whole package as a poll. Thank you again for your leadership.
Okay, thank you. So where's Anastasia and Carolyn? Caroline, Carolyn Goodman? Yes?
Hi, my name is Anasalzy Kazar, and I'm an intern at the California Clean Money Campaign. As a millennial, young voter and activist, I support Councilmember Bonin's motion to amend the Rules Committee proposal. The influence in money, the influence of money in politics shapes every issue that this council touches. I believe it should not be more difficult for candidates to qualify than current law. I urge you to support Councilmember Bonin's motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Good morning, Council President Wesson. Good morning, council members. I'm Carolina Goodman from CD4. I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles, which was involved 28 years ago in the creation of the L.A. Ethics Commission and the Campaign Finance Program. We continue to support the city's efforts to encourage qualified candidates to run competitive campaigns, and ask you to vote yes to implement the Ethics Commission's recent recommendations, as well as the Rules Committee amendment to empower small donors, and the additional motion from Councilmember Bonin to adjust the qualifying threshold to 1,1,500, so that we maintain the same number of minimum contributors as is required now, and adjust the citywide offices similarly. The average percentage of women on city councils for the 10 largest American cities is only 34%. For Los Angeles, it's an embarrassing 13%. The new and improved matching funds program could give more women the confidence to raise enough money to run for office.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that closes the comment on this issue. Mr. Rue, let me call on you. Recognize Mr. David Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. With one vote today, we can increase the power of small dollar donations sixfold, and go a long way to restoring faith in our elected city government. At present, the matching fund rate is as low as one to one, and the path to get to higher match rates is more difficult than it needs to be. During recent election cycles, we have seen the voters of Los Angeles stay away from the polls, thinking their voice and their influence can't possibly heard over the roar of big-money politics. Increasing the matching fund rate to six to one would allow qualified candidates to get support intended by the matching funds program. This will not just support new small donors, but amplify the voices of everyday Angelenos who deserve a seat at the table and a central role in guiding our city. I really want to thank the Ethics Commission for spending many hours on this issue, the many advocates and the community groups who spoke up in support, council members Joe Busciano and Paul Krikorian, who introduced this motion with me, and Council President Wesson for scheduling this item. I have been fighting for these reforms for a long time now, but especially now, at a time when people are losing faith in our institutions, when fraud and corruption seem to be, seem to be at every headline, and regular voters are left wondering if their voices matter anymore, it is incumbent upon us to hear them and to amplify their voices. Thank you, and I encourage an aye vote today, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, for calling on me, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. This is, this is probably the biggest step that the city of Los Angeles has ever taken to empower democracy and to strengthen public financing. It is the biggest one that, that I can remember in my time, and because of Mr. Rue and Mr. Wesson, we have really gotten here today, and I, I think we need to acknowledge that. I'm an advocate of full, clean money, 100% public financing, but we're, we're not there yet. We're, we're not main, but every step we take is important and significant, and I think the, the work that the Ethics Commission and these members have done is really pretty huge. I, I share some of the concerns of, of some of those who've testified about a potential inadvertent impact of making it harder for some people to get on the ballot, and I would like to see that addressed. So I've put in an amendment. The Ethics Commission has some concerns about that, that they think there's some inadvertent impacts of my inadvertent fix, so we're going to be sending that amendment to committee for more discussion, so as not to hold up today's action. We'll move forward today. That amending motion will go to committee for further discussion, and I appreciate you, Mr. Wesson. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's, it's pretty much of a no-brainer that we need to make the changes before us today, and the ones in the amendment, which I was proud to second. I think the idea of matching funds, as we originally set it up, was a good one, but it turned out that most of the people that benefited were city council members who already have an advantage in raising funds, and the other well-funded candidates. And I think with this change, we actually bring in the people we were getting at when we first started doing matching funds, which is the people that aren't as well-funded, but we give them some money so they can get across their ideas and, and have a shot. So I think this is an exciting step. I think the amendment will be a further exciting step, and I think we will have much more interesting and participatory elections in the future as a result.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coretts. Well, members, let's do it then. Let's refer Mr. Bonin's amendment to committee, and let's prepare to take this big step. With that said, Mr. Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Thank everyone.
And for the record, the amending motion and the committee report will be referred back to committee.
Thank you. All right, let's jump into general public comment at this point. Let's jump into general public comment at this point. So, Mr. Murphy, I'm going to start off with you again. Mary Nemec and Lenora Stevenson. Steven Nazinski.
As you know, 10 years ago, I came to see this building 10 years ago to speak out on all the agenda items. I've been here for 10 years. I met some interesting speakers through the years—Merv Evans, Leonard Shapiro. God rest those guys. Thanks.
Okay, so I was looking again for Mary, Lenora, Steven, Constance Sanders, Wanda Coker, Imelda Foley, Beverly Miller. When I call your name, just please come forward. So, when I call you, if you get to the center aisle—yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi, I'm Connie Saunders, and I'm the Pacoima Neighborhood Watch captain. I'm speaking today on the subject of the Garber Tank, which DWP has been preparing to construct now for about seven years without really properly notifying us, and I wanted to demand—I want you to demand, rather—that DWP stand down from immediate action on the Garber Tank recycle water project until adequate human health and safety risk studies have been ordered and completed, ensuring the human rights and safety of the Hanson Hills community. I've talked with several at the DWP. They all admit that they have not done any health risk or safety studies specifically, but they have done a lot of environmental studies over the year. That seems to be all that CEQA is requiring of them. Thank you.
Yes, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Thank you.
Erica, let's make a clarification. One second, ma'am.
Mr. President, on item one, the vote was to approve the committee report, and that was approved by 10 ayes, and then the amending motion is referred back to the committee.
Yes, okay. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Good morning, Mr. Wesson, and the entire council here, including my councilmember, Monica Rodriguez, who is in the room. My name is Beverly Miller. I'm here today representing homeowners from Hanson Hills, and if I may have all the representatives to stand to let you see how many of us that are here this morning to represent that we do not want the water tank in our beautiful neighborhood, there's other places that the tank can be placed, and we would like to have it placed someplace else. We're not radicals. We're not—incesting riot. We're just peaceful protesters. We're doctors. We're lawyers. We're teachers. We're mothers, and we are neighborhoods who would like to stay together as a neighborhood and refuse to let the tank come in our neighborhood, and we want you to help us.
Thank you. So, if we could have the next speaker, and please identify yourself first.
Good morning to all. My name is Wanda Coker. I am a resident of Hanson Hills. In fact, they want—DWP want to put the tank next to my house, and I have been retired from the city of Los Angeles for five years. I have worked hard to have this home where I will not have to be upset by it. I want—I would like to speak with Monica regarding this, so she can understand what the community is all about. We need to meet with her and all her constituents. We help you put—you in office. We want some action from you, verbal or by mail, whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Imelda Foley, and I am here as a resident—on behalf of the residents of Hanson Hills. I'm here in opposition to L.A. DWP's proposed water tank at the top of the residential area of approximately 240 homes. The residents have made their opposition known to many local legislators and the mayor. We need your support in our efforts to resist this plan. There is no logical reason for this project. An alternative has already been established. The risk to the community is still under study. Hanson Hills will already be impacted by the proposed high-speed rail. Notice to the residents was untimely, and then we were being informed—we were informed and not welcomed to dialogue. This disregard is unconscionable and disrespectful to the community of Hanson Hills that has been targeted, assuming wrongly that we are the community of least resistance.
Thank you. Are you Steven? Are you Steven, right?
Yes.
Okay, hold tight, Steven. So, again, I don't know if Mary came up or Ms. Stevenson. I'm looking for a Thaneer and a Fanny Long, Emily, Emily Dykes, Rob, if you're still here, Rebecca Long, and Mr. Previn. So, yes, sir, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Steven Nazinski. I've been up here several times speaking on home sharing, and I want to commend the committee recommendations for primary residents in a full year, and I also want to talk about the number of listings per primary residence that by allowing the good apples, by allowing the primary resident people, in cases like me and many others—I have two rooms, okay? You can double the amount of money that the city is receiving by allowing already the good apples, the good home, by allowing—not trying to control that. And because policing what are friends, family, and lovers from paying guests can be a hugely invasive process, and don't put the city in the middle of someone's home. Don't have them try and figure out who's inside the house, and by the mere fact—
Thank you. Thank you, Steven. Yes, ma'am. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, council, for hearing us. My name is Fanny Long, and I'm here as a resident of Hanson Hills to dispute the proposal to build that tank at Garber Hill. Now, I moved from Gardena to beautiful Hanson Hills with a lovely view, and I do not want that tank to block the view of this lovely valley that I live in now. I am a first owner of the home there, and so I'd like to continue to live there. I raised my children there, and she will speak also, and I'm wondering, would that tank—would that add any aesthetic view to where I am now? Will it make my values of my property go up, or will it diminish? I want you to think about that. And so, I'm a member of the Pacoima Neighborhood Council. They came to us June of 2017, and we got the notice August 15th of 2018. So, we do not want the tank, so no tanks to the tank.
Thank you. Where's your daughter? Where's your daughter? I want to make sure I call your daughter up. Now, where—you basking in the applause. Where is your daughter? Okay, so there you are. I don't want to miss you. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
My name is Mary.
Mr. Herman, stop, or Mr. Spindler. It's one of the two of you. We're gonna—you're gonna be called—these people are gonna be quiet while you speak. I'm gonna demand that you're quiet while they speak. So, one more sound, and you will be removed. Okay, that's the second warning for you both. Ma'am, I apologize. Go right ahead.
My name is Mary Crockett. I'm here opposing the water tank for Hanson Hills. I've lived there for 43 years. You guys had originally planned to put the water tank in an alternative area, and that's what I propose, that DWP do find an alternative area to put the water tank, because I oppose it being on Hanson Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's gonna be hard to top your mom.
You got that right. I'm Rebecca Long. Monica Rodriguez is our rep, and we really want you to represent us. We would like to see you, actually see you, because we voted for you in our meetings. Like my mom said, we are the original owners of the house on Hanson Hills, and we do not appreciate you guys putting a tank on the hill. It was a groundbreaking at Hanson Dam, so it's supposed to be at Hanson Dam, not Hanson Hills. As far as the homeless thing, we have an EDD office that's empty right by the 118. Use it. Make some use of it for the homeless people. It's just common sense. It's an empty building with nothing, you know, in it, so let's use some common sense. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. So, is Mr. Previn still here? And did I call Madeline Hamel, Steve Slusan, Teresa Espinoza, Gustavo Vargas? Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Madeline Hamel. I'm here to talk about the demolition of Debbie Reynolds Legacy Studio. Debbie has been a home to me as a student, a dance student, a teacher, as a peer, as a professional dancer. I'm here to also talk about the importance of the arts community. The director of my first tour at a young age of 16 told me, "You can't be a good person without being—or you can't be a good performer without being a good person." This is true. Some of the best performers, artists, and dancers I know are also huge humanitarians that lift those up around them. Having studied and read many books about humanities and ethical research, I can tell you that arts play a large impact on this. One finds themselves being ethical when they are aware, intelligent, insightful, respectful, and therefore act responsible, and you can see this in the arts. I encourage you in talking about gentrification of the North Hollywood area, that by tearing down Debbie Reynolds, we're tearing down the community that built the North Hollywood's arts community, which is the artist.
Okay, before the next speaker, and for some of the folk that were here earlier where they had the concern about DWP, I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. President, and I want to thank the members of the community for coming. As I mentioned in my meeting with two of the members of the Pacoima Neighborhood Council and other members in the community on this issue previously, this—upon becoming aware of this project, it was one of the areas, given the concerns that were raised, that I also questioned DWP, and this and several other projects are in the process of being put on hold because of the concerns that I—with my staff and a number of the questions that were raised by the community—are in the process of being addressed. So, again, as I informed the members of the community that I met with yesterday, two of whom are serving on the Pacoima Neighborhood Council, we have in fact addressed this issue and are putting this project on hold, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, that—thank you for that clarification. Okay, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Teresa Espinoza, and I am a 20-year veteran of the dance and entertainment industry, and I—as of 2017, November of 2017, I am the new owner of Debbie Reynolds Legacy Studios. And to clarify, I am the business owner of it. I am not the building owner, and so I'm here today to ask for a declaration of historical landmark on our building and to—I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous. We have a notice of demolition on our building, and so just—we need a stay of execution. And as you can see, this is part of the community. We found out we could be here last night at midnight, and this is what's showing up today, so at last-minute notice, and we've never done anything like this, and so we hope that our efforts do not go unseen just because we don't know what the process is. So, we ask our city councilmember, Paul Krikorian, to please take—a look at what we're here for.
Okay, thank you. And I was gonna say to you that, you know, the next time you come, you think you could bring a couple of people with you. I mean, you think maybe you wouldn't have to come here by yourself. It's a hell of a crowd. All right, so—
Thank you. We're very passionate people.
That's apparent. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Gustav.
Wait a minute. Mr. Spindler, let me just stop you, because I know how important this is to all of you that on just hours' notice, you adjust your calendar to come here today, and I'm not gonna let that be ruined by two people that disrespect what it is—the reason why you're here. So, if we could remove the two of them, officers? Now, you're being removed, and if you guys don't like profanity, you may want to hold your ears. So, would you remove both of them, please? Yeah, and if you—you would just please leave. You would just—you need to leave. Mr. City Attorney, as you can tell, the meeting is being disrupted again. The—the meeting is being disrupted. That is Mr. Herman in particular that is disrupting this meeting, so if we could please, sergeants, have him removed, and I think there's one more gentleman that needs to be removed with him as well.
And in case the mics weren't picking it up, they were making noises throughout the presentation, distracting us, and we can still hear them out, and of course, per usual, they were making noise as they exited the room.
Just please—
And he's continuing to shout.
Would you now remove Mr. Spindler, who is disrupting the meeting as well?
And I'm not sure if the mics are picking it up in this room, but they're continuing to shout as they leave, which is their practice.
Okay, now let's—
Shouting, "I'm leaving voluntarily," as well.
Thank you. Leaving very slowly, voluntarily, to disrupt our meeting.
Okay, please identify yourself, and let's hear you.
Hi, my name's Gustav Vargas, and I'm a dancer, teacher, choreographer for 20 years, and I've been teaching at Debbie Reynolds Legacy Dance Studios for over 10 years. I just want to let y'all know that Debbie Reynolds is an inspiration for us, what she did in the dance community, and also, as you can see, we're not—we're from all over the country. So many dancers come here to train at Debbie Reynolds Legacy Dance Studios, to work in this profession. This isn't just a hobby for us. This is what we love to do. It's our passion. I mean, you got to think about how many of you or your kids see—so you think you dance Dancing with the Stars, World of Dance. Debbie Reynolds Legacy gives us that space to keep training and keep entertaining you guys. It's—it's something so beautiful that it can't be taken away from us. We live there. That's our second home. You know, we're used to expressing ourselves through our bodies, and as you can see, we're here to express ourselves vocally, to represent for the dance community. It's not just something that we do as a hobby.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Joe Brown, eight-year resident of North Hollywood, current faculty member at Debbie Reynolds. I'm here to implore property owners and city officials to reconsider the demolition of Debbie Reynolds and declare it a historical landmark. The studio is a second creative home for myself and for thousands of actors and dancers and entertainers worldwide, and is considered a Hollywood gem, not only for Debbie Reynolds' fame, but for so many iconic entertainers that have enriched and improved the arts, thereby improving the quality of life for the surrounding community locally and globally. The future of the NoHo Arts District does not solely rely on the commerce of local business and new residencies, but on the historical significance and soul of landmarks such as Debbie Reynolds. The travel and leisure industry of Los Angeles thrives on Hollywood entertainment, and Debbie Reynolds is a hub and destination for visitors seeking the old Hollywood experience. As an MIC alum, holding a master's of architecture degree from Southern California Institute of Architecture, and as a previous intern at the L.A. Urban Design Studio at the Urban Planning Design Department, I'm here to also offer my services to help declare Debbie Reynolds as a historical landmark and reconsider design solutions to improve the efficacy of the lot or preserving the legacy that is simply vital.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Previn, I will let you come up, because I did call you. You know, Mr. Kretz?
Yes, you did call me.
Mr. Kretz, you and I should join. You see how all of these guys are in shape? I mean, we would be—you and I would be dangerous. Okay, Mr. Previn? I did call you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn. I'll try to keep it brief, because it's not possible in 60 seconds, but I just wanted to let you know that when a community like Studio City votes for an impact statement, we were given the impression that you would get to speak five minutes, because it's complicated the campaign finance thing. I know everybody's trying, but—but you didn't give it. You gave it in Rules Committee one morning, when nobody could hear anything, and it was in a big mix. It's not fair to the people of Studio City, who are robust. We care. We care about what's happening. We want the campaign finance to be fair, so that the small candidates—like if any of these young people try to run, they're not going to be able to raise $10,000 just like that, so they should get a little seed money, and that's why we're hoping that—we were glad that Bonin's looking at one part in committee, but we disagree that you can go forward with the campaign ordinance, as you've written it. It's not appropriate, and we did file a CIS on this, and I—I'm very disappointed, but I do appreciate your trying, and you're gonna get it there, because the optics are terrible for you guys to be pushing all the public dollars, 16, 20 million, up into the incumbents in Carol Terosian, Carolyn Ramsey. Bad. So, thank you for your time, sir. Have a great weekend. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, let's get some more of our Debbie Reynolds folks. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Francesca Di Guari. I'm a professional dancer. I come from Italy. I moved in L.A. I moved in L.A. eight years ago. And one of the places that has been my second home day to night has been Debbie Reynolds. Besides the fact that a lot of magic has been created into these walls and like, like our, our heart is in there. It's not only our profession and our passion, but this is a second home for me. Don't take it away from us. Because it's something that you cannot recreate in another space. The magic that is inside those wa- those walls is only there. And we're not gonna have it again. It's not gonna be the same. We need this place from everyone, from all over the world.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is Victor Ojas. I'm a professional dancer and choreographer. I'm thirty-nine years old, and my last nine-to-five was when I was eighteen years old. And that's simply through dance. And when I moved to Los Angeles, it was only because of Debbie Reynolds Dance Studio. They took me in, helped build my career. I can now sustain myself. I can buy a home. And this is all because of what Debbie Reynolds provided for me. A room, a space for creativity and, and growth. I'm a full man because of this woman and because of this studio. And I just, everybody, if everybody could just think of where we will all go if this place is gone. Not everybody will take us. Because they all, every other studio already has us. We need our space, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before the next speaker, and I think maybe you guys need to let me start calling the names again. Couple of folk may have just slipped in here, I don't know. But I'd like to recognize Mr. Krikorian, and then I'll come back to you guys, because it's my understanding, this is in, you're fortunate to have this in your area. So Mr. Krikorian, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And mindful that the Brown Act prevents me from having a lot of discussion with you about this right now, because it's not on the agenda. Let me just say generally that I'm privileged to represent the NoHo Arts District, which is one of the greatest treasures of our city. Not because of the new buildings that are being built there, but because of the artists that are its lifeblood and that made it what it is. And the fact that you all came out here today like this, on a moment's notice, is incredibly impressive and inspiring, and I thank you for it. And you're, I urge you to stay actively involved. Because I learned about this, my office learned about this yesterday. And the fact that you were served with a notice of demolition, you know, we didn't even know that this project was in the works. So you have my absolute promise that I'm gonna sit down with you and work through what the options are that will be available to you. I can't, I can't make any promises to you, because what the property owner does, if it's by right and there's nothing, no, if the city doesn't have power to stop that, I don't know, because we haven't even looked at it. We found out about it yesterday. But I recognize the incredible importance of this studio, just like Millennium, just like the other theater companies that are in this area. This is what makes NoHo what it is. So I'm really looking forward to being able to work with you and try and see if we can figure out some solutions. And a different home if we can't work out a solution. But I want to keep you here in NoHo.
Okay, so let me try to get Danielle, if we haven't already, Town. Is it, uh, De- De- DeShade Bonner, Victor Wallace? Somebody whose initials are F.A.? Isaac Ulenberg? Natalie Seetik? Jonathan Zabawa? Ashley Coffey? Any, did I, did I, did I get any hits on that? All right, come on.
Hi, guys, I'm Danielle Town. I'm a professional dancer and choreographer of eighteen years. I'm also the head of Dancers Alliance, and I'm the dance representative for SAG-AFTRA. And so just letting you know that I have the ear of the dance community, and almost every single dancer has started their professional career off at Debbie Reynolds Legacy Dance Studios. She has impacted us with her education, her spirit. It's a living landmark. It encompasses what she wanted to bring to us culturally, emotionally. If you go to the studios, it's filled with walls of her memorabilia. It has affected more people than just the dancers in this room. Patrick Swayze, Lucille Ball, Michael Jackson, Madonna, Cher, Usher. All these people have taken class there, have rehearsed there, have been influenced by her. This is really important, and we don't want to let it go. And it's not something where we can just move to another space. This is the space that she created, and we want to see it.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Hi, my name is DeShawde Bonner, uh, from Virginia, professional dancer. Been in L.A. for eight years. Just want to reiterate that Debbie's Reynolds is so much more than just a dance studio. As you can see, it is a home to all of us dancers here in L.A. Me personally, I would not be here if it was not for Debbie Reynolds. When I didn't have the will to go on, Debbie's was there. When I thought addiction was gonna take over my life, Debbie's was there. Debbie's is a home to all of us from across the country, from across the world. Debbie's Reynolds is a home to all of us. So again, I just want to reiterate and say thank you for hearing us and being there and giving us your ear, because Debbie's Reynolds is a home, and it's so much more than just a dance studio. Thank you.
Okay, and so before I get the next person, again, I'm looking for Ashley Coffey, Lauren Gerro, or Gerard, Darryl Hardaway, Robert Lopez, and Erin Moreno. But if I called you before that, come on up. So don't be shy.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Jonathan Zabawa, and I was the building manager for the Debbie Reynolds Studio for fifteen years and Debbie Reynolds' personal assistant. And I just want to say that is just one of my greatest accomplishments in my life, to see thousands of people's dreams accomplished because of what she created. Now Hollywood, that Hollywood sign out there is nothing without a place like Debbie Reynolds Studio to give these people, these talented people, a place to grow and create. Now, a lot of people don't know this, Debbie's brother passed away last night. And on Wednesday, he said that he saw Debbie. She is still alive, and she wants to continue her legacy with these people. So please, please, keep her legacy alive. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Victor Wallace, and I'm a professional dancer and a choreographer. And I just wanted to say that when I found out about this happening, I was very devastated, because as a young child growing up as a dancer, not having much of an outlet or a place to dance, when I would come to L.A. to visit L.A. before I moved here, Debbie was a place I could go to to not only call a home, but to be able to dream. And when I would doubt that or had people doubt me and what I was doing, Debbie Reynolds was there. There's many other studios around the area, but for some reason, I always came here. Debbie was where I went to first, and that's where I felt the most comfortable and the most at home. I wanted to dream about being big and being a choreographer and coming out here, even dancing and choreography, you know, choreography at Debbie and being a teacher there. And I'm still trying to fulfill that need, but if it's not there, then I won't fulfill what I want to do and many other kids who I train under me who want to do the same thing. So the best thing I would say is please keep that space there, because people's dreams will be destroyed if you take that place away. That's not, that's not fair to anybody. We're all here together because we're dreaming bigger than what anyone else can even see in this space and outside in the world. But we know that if we're together here, it's gonna be amazing.
Thank you. Okay, let me, uh, and we, I know I've called other people, but I want to get more. It's just amazing, I call all the names, but the group hasn't reduced, so I mean, it's frightening. Gwendolyn Posey, Anne Annie Davis, Cecilia Kemp, Diego Mesa, Ron Zambor. And if I already called you, come on up and identify. Yes?
Hello, I'm Natalie Seetik. I'm a member of Session Five of the Debbie Reynolds Scholarship Program. Debbie Reynolds was an inspiration, not only to all of us dancers, but to singers, to actors, and to artists. For years, legends have been coming to her space, because that is the impact that she had on the entertainment industry, all of us standing here today, and many others who are with us here in spirit. The future generation should have the chance to acknowledge the difference she made in our community. And the space should continue to be one where artists can create, grow, and inspire. I know that's what she would have wanted, and we should honor her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Candida, why don't you come and scooch in here too now? After the next speaker. If you, okay, I just didn't want to have you wait. Next one. Identify.
Hi, my name is Ashley Coffey. I am a dancer and actress and former employee of Debbie Reynolds. As you've heard already, this place is for artists. It's not just a studio, it's a home, a creative space, a place where you can be yourself and not be judged, a place where you can practice your craft. Whether you are a dancer, a musician, an actor, you can truly do what you feel in this space. Debbie herself created this space for artists. Her legacy has made the studio what it is, and it's our job as artists to continue it. We as artists have so much passion and love for, for the studio. This place is a daily part of our lives. We train here, we rehearse here. Sometimes people just come to the studios to simply embrace the energy, because there is a certain energy when you walk into the studio. And for those who know, you feel that. And that's history. History of what the hallways hold, history of what Debbie's created. There are endless legends that grace this place and legends that taught here and some that still do. And even more legends are being created this very day, every day in that studio. As artists, we normally get the short end of the stick, and here at the studio, we come first. So if you could please, please, help us.
Thank you. Okay, again, before I call the next person, looking for Becca Kabla, Kabah, Arthur Brodus, Diana Garcia. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Lauren Gerard, twenty-three years, resident of the L.A. community and professional dancer. I launched my professional dance career with the Debbie Reynolds Scholarship Program a year ago. And one year ago, my entire life was changed for the better because of what Debbie Reynolds had to offer me. It would honestly break my heart if this place went away. This place is not just a dance studio with incredible faculty and training for all dancers. It is a home to me and so many others. One of my fellow alumni, who couldn't be here today, Enrique Torres, who's also a Long Beach resident, he said, "Until I stepped into Debbie Reynolds Legacy Studios, I watched myself blossom into not only the dancer I was becoming, but the human being that I never thought I could be. Being surrounded by people that care about each other, loving what they do, and enjoying every single moment." Debbie Reynolds is a diamond in the rough in the NoHo community. It is an amazing place to train, to have a home. It is a safe haven for all. It is a place full of history, passion, opportunity, and hope that we cannot afford to lose.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Isaac Ulenberg, and I'm a professional dancer and employee of Debbie Reynolds Studio as well. We all enjoyed certain aspects of our childhood, whether it's from the smooth sounds of Temptations or to the red leather jacket from Michael Jackson's Thriller, all of which is conceptualized and formed at Debbie Reynolds Studio. So the history of these floors, of these walls are not in question. But it's the future that's in the balance right now. The future of these artists and individuals who've put all their lives to come here to Los Angeles to be able to enjoy the fruits of what the NoHo Arts District is. And it wouldn't be the NoHo Arts District if you took away the arts, if that disappeared from what is now the NoHo Arts District. So all these young individuals, all of us sacrificing our lives, our housing, many of us have been homeless at some point. And all of us give everything just to be here, just to be able to have a home at Debbie Reynolds Dance Studio. Just be able to have a place where we can all share our community, share our love, and share our experience with each other. And even though we're weathering a storm right now, we hope you remember this thing in the rain.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Kempa. Debbie Reynolds is one of the reasons that I moved to L.A. from Sweden. I didn't know a single person when I moved here, and I made so many friends at Debbie's. It's something about the atmosphere there. People come to train with lots of passion and love for dance, and it unites us. I think it would be a very senseless decision to wipe away the history of Debbie's. We needed to preserve this establishment, uh, we need to preserve this establishment for future generations. Debbie Reynolds is my home away from home. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could get Freedom, Ricardo, uh, I'm drawing a blank. Benitez, I just had a frozen brain for a minute. Irma Alcatar, Jose Banegas, and Danny Green. Yes, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Robert Lopez. I have been a student at Debbie Reynolds for over ten years and an instructor there for five years. The impact it's had on us, as you can see, we found about, we found out about this last night around midnight. And this doesn't even represent a quarter of the people that it's affected. We have people coming from Japan, Switzerland, Germany. Every summer during this, the normal year, they're, they're coming in by the busloads just to take class at Debbie's. It's a true gem since the seventy-nine. And it's impacted us in such a way, you know, people call it their homes. People have given their all there. They've put everything they believe in at this studio. It represents much more than just a space of four walls, right? We have tears, we have sweat, we have blood that has been put into this studio. That's why we, everyone here is fighting so hard to keep this space, because it means more than just a space to us.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself. Yes?
My name is Freedom, and I'm a concerned dance citizen. Debbie Reynolds is the mediator of the dance world. You have dance studios for every, in, every different reason, but Debbie Reynolds is the mediator. I came from Texas, but people come from all over the world. Like, we are not, um, your average, everyday citizens. We are here to provide a service of our spirit to the human race. And Debbie Reynolds allows us to do this. And if you don't allow us to keep the actual space, allow us to keep the historical space and give us a new space, that doesn't even actually provide the history that the kids who will come up, my kids whenever I have kids, they want to see where the real energy was at. And so we need this space. And we obviously have, here have shown it. So as more people come and speak, you should automatically know that this is of the utmost importance for, even for you, so.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you guys could give me a, hold on. If I can get you in, in the, you're looking right at me right now with that big purse. And the lady with the green hat. Hey, come on. I'm gonna slip you guys in. Go right ahead. Identify yourself.
Gwendolyn Posey, here to talk about the Garber Recycled Tank Water Project. Actually, sitting there appalled that so many of us have to come out to talk about a tank that was slated for the Hanson Dam Golf Course. Also, further appalled that our city council representative, Monica Rodriguez, would say that she spoke with two community members, when we had over thirty at her office to speak with her. And to hear her address this council and say that she just heard about it when she was there 2015 with her friend and mentor, Eric Garcetti, for the groundbreaking is even more disturbing. How and why she's representing me, I don't know. But I'm here to speak for myself. We do not want this tank in our community, and we are really hoping that she would really get on board and support her constituents.
Well, I think if you would have heard her response, you would see that she's gonna try to do everything that she can. Come on. Come on, come on. Identify yourself.
My name is Annie Davis. I am a thirty-six-year retired, retired teacher from L.A. Unified School District. I too am a homeowner in Hanson Hills. My husband and I bought the home, we're the first owners of the home over forty years ago. And we're watching our community deteriorate. In the last year and a half, we have watched so much dumping in our community. What's interesting, Ms. Councilman Rodriguez, I have sent you over forty, fifty pictures over different periods of time, showing the deplorable situation. Our sidewalks along Hanson Dam on Glen Oaks Boulevard, there are three blocks in Pacoima in which the homeless have been pushed into our community. All the stacked up lined up RVs, the big eighteen-wheeler trucks are allowed to park there, the detached trailers, and stacks and stacks of trash. I just sent you pictures yesterday, over twenty-three pictures. I got out of my car each time to walk that sidewalk, that street, and to show you what we see.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Come on, I'm trying to get to everybody. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, Reverend Arthur Brodus from the Northeast San Fernando Valley. Thank you for this time. This morning, I read a scripture from fifty-first number of songs. And it said, "Create in me, oh God, a clean heart and renew a right spirit within me." And I'm hoping our councilwoman, Monica Rodriguez, would take heed. I had to examine myself and things that are happening in my community. We're not accountable to you, you are accountable to us. There are many circumstances in our community that are not being dealt with. One or two people are not enough for you to speak to. You have people who've come to your office numerous times to talk with you in regards to circumstances and concerns in our community. You need to meet with them, not just one or two, because the two people you talk to does not bring back that information to us. Please, please, look at yourself and look at your community as a whole.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm, you know, where it relates to general public comment, I think we've satisfied that, Mr. City Attorney, but I want to hear... think we've satisfied that, Mr. City Attorney, but I want to hear from, I'd see Ms. Pierman. I want to get her in, and then I'm going to hear a few more from the Debbie Reynolds, and then we're going to move forward. Yes, Ms. Pierman?
Yeah, I'm happy to see all these people. We need to reopen Van Nuys Video Conferencing. If you did that, you could speak on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. You know what, to wait every other month. You could have spoke on this a lot earlier. We need, this is North Hollywood, and that's part of the San Fernando Valley, which the city council doesn't care about. We will, we need to vote no on all the bond issues, especially number three. These are deceptive. These all have to be paid for somehow. It's just some bail projects from other bond issues. The only one good, we need to repeal the gas tax. We need to help out the number 11, which means they can still take care of people while on break. So that is very essential. We need Ricardo Benitez. We need Benito Benel. We need John Cox for governor. We need to bring back pride in the San Fernando Valley and California.
Thank you. Okay, Candido, I'm going to hold you to close. Candido, wait, wait, wait. You're going to be the closer. So let me take a quick three or four. Who's next from the Debbie Reynolds shop? Identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Misha Lee. I've been dancer, choreographer, and teacher at Debbie Reynolds for the last 13 years.
And I'm Erin Moreno. I've been teaching at Debbie Reynolds Studio for nine years, and I'm the director of the scholarship program. Misha Lee is the assistant director. We, everything that everyone has said has showed you how tight our community is, how important this building is to us, how important our community is to us. Just to share a personal, within the first weeks of directing the scholarship program, I'm sitting at a desk across from Margie Duncan, who is Debbie's personal assistant and best friend, listening to The Temptations rehearsing in our studio. Also allowing our dancers to have the opportunity to sweat on the same floor that Michael Jackson rehearsed Thriller in. I think the history is apparent, but the most powerful thing is that this is the only studio left for training purposes that is connecting the past to the present. So you're seeing a bunch of young people up here that care about the history of our industry, and we need to preserve that. Thank you.
Okay, let me get two more. Pick your, your two hardest closers. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Darryl Hardaway. I'm 25, and I'm one of the former scholarship students from last year. And it's kind of funny hearing the director and the assistant director talk about something that I want to talk about as well. It's the history and like the lessons that I've learned from being there. I remember walking through and talking to Roberta, which is one of the staff members there. She's been there since the beginning. And she told us like how Debbie got the place and how it used to be a post office and how it used to be a furniture store. And she saw those big windows, and she was like, "That's my new home." And how she brought all these legends in to rehearse there and to practice their craft in her time. And then how during the change of ownership, we got to see all of her gowns and her awards and all these things that she held dearly to her, that she left at the studio. Even throughout the walls, the halls, you can see her posters of all the movies that she was in. And it's just such a prime place of history and knowledge as a young dancer and as someone that wants to live throughout this community for the rest of my life. So.
Thank you. Last one.
Hi, my name is Kevin Stay. I am a dancer, choreographer, and director in Los Angeles for the past 30 years. I've seen studios come and go. Debbie Reynolds was born at the beginning of, of the pop dance experience, and it has lasted. It's the only one that's lasted. It's one of our few heritage sites. There is, there are no others left, and it's maybe one or two small ones, but it's arguably the most important. This is our Abbey Road Recording Studios. This is it. We don't have anything else. Most of our, many of our iconic dance performances and pieces were all created in this space. Things that you've been dancing to in your living room, at clubs, they were all created here. Please save this from demolition. Thank you.
Candido, where are you? Come on.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank all these young people for being here, and, and I think you're going to change the, the minds of this council, and something's going to be done for you. Mr. President, I have a question. Why is it the city attorney's office allows a board member of a neighborhood council who has on video attacked one of his board members with a frozen bottle, admits to attacking it, or admits to hitting the individual, who also sets up another American flag so that it falls on another board member, who as a woman who comes before, before the neighborhood council and is pleading with the neighborhood council because one of the former board members called her and her family tacos, nothing is done to this individual, yet he's still on the board, and the city attorney's office and Dunn has done nothing. Neighborhood councils were formed to give empowerment to individuals, people who felt they had no voice. Yet, when this woman came before the neighborhood council, basically she was laughed at, and yet this individual is still on the board. Something has to be done by the city council.
Thank you. Okay, to all of the folk that were here, I'm going to ask you, just because we're going to put you on television, and we appreciate your presence. Believe it or not, this council really enjoys being engaged with the residents of the city. Why don't you give yourselves a round of applause? I mean, really. Let's put the camera on them. And, and I wish that I, we had the time to take all of the cards, but we just do not. So with that said, I'm closing general public comment. Mr. Weezer, you have a special or special, is it special one?
Yes, Mr. President. Special motion one has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, so I don't know whether the council member will want to comment first, but what we should do at some point is.
I think he's saying, Mr. City Attorney, that you can go.
Oh, thank you. I, I think the motion's very clear. The findings seem good, so that what we should do is we should vote on the findings under government code 54954.2, take public comment, and then vote on the substance.
Okay, well, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the issue.
Oh, we have to take public comment if there is any.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
And I believe there is a request to send that forthwith.
Forthwith. That brings us where? Is it time for posting and referral? They're posted, they're referral announcements, members?
And, Mr. President, one additional announcement on item one. That ordinance will be held over one week to October 12.
I understand. All right, announcements, members? No announcements? Can we all rise for adjourning motions? All rise. Okay, adjourning motions. To the right, no, I closed general public comment. Yes, no, I called, because we, we, we didn't, sir, we didn't, we took as much comment as we, as I could. I announced it. I announced what I was doing, and then we did close. We tried to get everybody that, we tried to get everybody that we could get. No, sir, we tried to get everybody that we can get, so please don't, uh, inter, inter, interrupt what we're trying to do now. I apologize. I do the best I can with what I've got, and I apologize for missing you. With that said, do we have, with that said, do we have adjourning motions to my right? Do we have adjourning motions to my left? This meeting is adjourned.